Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to welcome you to the Tuesday, January 24th, 2023, meeting of the Hayden City Council. It's 5:01 PM. Could I have a roll call of council members, please?
Council President Roder.
Yes.
Councilmember De Priest.
Here.
Councilmember Satterfield.
Yes.
And Councilmember White is absent. We do have a quorum.
Okay. Council President Roder, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilmembers, do we have any additions or corrections to the agenda that we have tonight? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on first to our consent calendar. Ladies and gentlemen that are at this meeting a lot, I know I sound like a broken record, but for those of you that are not usually here, our city staff does business all the time, Monday through Friday, nine hours a day. Most of the stuff they do is just done administratively. However, some of the things that the council, that the staff does, requires the approval or the consent of city council, and that's what the consent calendar is all about. The folks here up front have all been provided information on the consent calendar since midweek, and they've had a chance to ask questions if they needed any clarification. But here's our consent calendar tonight. 1A, approval of the December 13th, 2022 city council meeting minutes. 1B, the approval of the December 21st, 2022 city council special meeting minutes. 1C, the approval of the January 10th, 2023 city council meeting minutes. 1D, approval of the 2023 Kay Tigers Taekwondo contractual services agreement. 1E, approval of the 2023 Flanagan Ventures DBA Wiley E-Waters contractual services agreement. 1F, approval of fiscal year 2023 first quarter treasurer statement. 1G, approval of the appointment of Arts and Veterans Commission members. 1H, approval of Hayden area regional wastewater facility upgrades, payment request. 1I, approval of PZE 22-0128 Curzon Zone Map Amendment Written Decision. 1J, approval of city representatives on various boards. 1K, ratification of bills paid on January 11th, 2023. 1L, the ratification of bills paid on January 18th, 2023. And 1M, approval of bills for payment. Are there any questions or discussion amongst council members on the consent calendar items?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'm going to...
Go ahead, Mr. Satterfield.
Going to abstain from voting on the appointment of the Arts Commission member. The rest of it, I'll vote on.
Understand. Any further discussion or comment? I, at this point, would entertain a motion regarding the consent calendar items.
Mayor, I have just a question.
Oh, yes, sir.
If we're going to vote on that separately, do we have to bring that item out separately and vote on the Arts Commission and then the rest?
He's not going to vote separately. He's just going to abstain from that item on his vote.
Okay, good. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
May I, may I have a motion from a council member regarding, regarding the disposition of the consent calendar?
I'd like to make the motion that we approve the consent calendar as written A through M.
Second.
Second? And second? By the way, Councilmember De Priest is feeling quite well, but he has lost his voice. So...
Easy now, easy now. I'm saving it.
This should go a little faster. Is there any further discussion of the motion?
The only thing I have is, do I need to make, including the motion, that Councilmember Satterfield is abstaining from...
When, when the roll call vote is called for and he votes, you are...
He'll do it, okay. I'll leave my motion as is then, Mayor.
Hearing no further discussion, roll call vote, please. Abby?
Council President Satterfield.
Whoops.
Abstain.
Councilmember Satterfield. Oh, I apologize. Councilmember Satterfield.
Yes.
And abstention on...
You mean, you're abstaining at this, if I understood you correctly...
Right, but just on the one issue.
Yes.
I get to vote on the rest, right?
Yeah, just vote, but with your vote, reiterate that you're abstaining from that item.
Okay, I vote yes, and except for the Arts Commission applicant. Thank you.
Councilmember De Priest.
Yes.
And Council President Roder.
Yes. Consent calendar items are approved. We have, our second order of business is visitor or public comment on non-agenda items. Ladies and gentlemen, if you would like to comment on non-agenda items, I'd appreciate it if you would, at the back of the room, there is a form we'd appreciate you filling out and then bringing it up here, and I will gladly get you scheduled on that. Okay, since no one is running for the back, I'm going to go ahead and start our public comment period. For public comment period, ladies and gentlemen, each speaker during the public comment period will be limited to five minutes. The council may not take or hear any testimony regarding planning and zoning matters. The issues of any performance of any city employee constitute matters that must be discussed only in executive session. Matters that have been previously heard and decided by the council, we will not take public comment on. And citizens may use this time to request that items be placed on future agendas for further discussion. The last is that we insist that everybody in this room remain respectful, including public commenters. Yes, ma'am?
Just a question about format. So, I've only been to a couple of meetings and I haven't spoken. For all of these action items, which are agenda items, those will also include public comment with each item?
No, ma'am. For any item that is on an agenda item, public comment is not taken on those items tonight at all. Those are for council deliberations only.
When we can public comment on them?
If you would like to make a public comment, uh... If you would like to make a public comment, it must, it cannot be on these items, and the, we will, we would have accepted written comments up to this point. But public comment at the, at the forum for, for the items on the action item are not taken tonight.
So we can comment on things that aren't on here, but we can't comment on things that are on here?
Yes, ma'am. That's correct.
So how do we... You do see how, to an ordinary person, that sounds kind of silly?
Doesn't even, ordinary people, sure, I understand how that, how that might sound, but those are the, those are the rules that we operate under as, under city council.
Something we need to change.
Yeah.
Next public comment period, you've got the opportunity to do that.
Anything about one of these action items.
Again, I'm sorry?
It's too late for me to say anything about one of these action items.
For tonight, yes, ma'am.
And I think it would be interesting to know how many people in the room are really aware of it, and maybe most of them are, I don't know.
Ma'am, I'm, we're going to, we're going to move on. I appreciate your point.
Okay.
Sir.
On that point, I, I did recall that you and I had a discussion about that topic, about commenting on items that are on the agenda. You, I remember you telling me that, that you were going to have that changed, but you worked to change that so that the public can comment on agenda items.
Do you want to include that in this public comment, that request?
Mr. Ettrion, if, if you would, because I know him, if you would like to include that in your public comment at the speaker podium, feel free. Certainly. Our first commenter is Mr. Mike Kincaid. Yes, sir, please. And Mr. Kincaid, if you would please state your name and whether or not you are a resident of the city of Hayden, I would appreciate it.
Is this on?
Uh, yes, sir, the microphone is on.
Name is Mike Kincaid, and I'm a city resident. Thank you. This is an update on the Coeur d'Alene Airport Terminal project and possible airline service. I'm a city head of Hayden, resident pilot, longtime end user of the airport, and a member of the Coeur d'Alene Airport Association. People that don't know the history of the airport, it used to be where the fairgrounds is, now moved to this site in 1942. They put a tower in the late 40s, hoping to get airline service, and Northwest didn't come here. It's been tried several times since then, never has worked, and they're trying again. The reason it hasn't worked is because Spokane Air National is so close, but they're trying it again, and why it could be successful this time is, first of all, our population has increased quite a bit, and there's big money behind this. Abports is a Virginia-based company owned by Goldman Sachs, whose revenues in '20 and '21 were about 60 million, or 60 billion, excuse me. The scope of this project, it's a $10 to $20 million project for the, for the first phase, and the first phase is a terminal on the east ramp, and across the street will be a parking lot with a platform on top for electric takeoff and landing vehicles. Type of aircraft they're talking about, from a 76-passenger twin jet to Boeing 737s and Airbus 320s, up to 186 seats. No airlines have committed yet. The site with the pending lease is on Airport Road with Wyoming and Miles Roads feeding it from Highway, and of course Ramsey.
Mr. Kincaid?
Yes.
If I might interrupt you briefly, if you could address your comments to the council, I would appreciate it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Thank you very much. The site with the pending issue is on Airport Road, and the good about this, you have direct flights of Boise, Seattle, and Burbank. One county employee is really excited about putting her mom on the flight directly to Southern California. The airports, that's the company airports, they predict 300 new airport jobs locally. The bad is along our list. The chosen location is very close to neighborhoods. If you look from the city hall, for example, as comparison to where this is going to be to a neighborhood on the east ramp, it's closer than the library, it's closer than Walmart, it's closer than Capone's, and it's closer than LDS Church, just to keep it perspective neighborhood-wise. So we have several problems with that. Air pollution, air pollution is a big deal. Studies show that air fuel, our fuel from these jet aircraft cause carcinogenic pollutants, and the smell of jet fuel is going to be kind of nauseating to people right by the airport, especially since our winds are southwest prevailing here. Water pollution, anybody thirsty? Well, the extensive handling of jet fuel and de-icing equipment causes water pollution. Noise pollution, that's a whole nother thing. That's going to be a real factor, and it's, studies have shown that causes all kinds of health issues, plus you can't sleep. So we're going to have idling jet aircraft and APUs idling when the jets are sitting on the east ramp in the winter. Traffic. For those that moved here from other areas that have heavy traffic and you like that, boy, don't fret, you're going to love it. Because just using the airports, expecting, and I just got a call, it's been an hour and a half with the airports executive before I came here tonight, but projecting up to 750 vehicles a day going to the airport for flights. The people that arrive have to get back, so that's more. And then you have the employees and freight and so forth, we're going to have double that probably, probably at many, it's 2,000 vehicles a day, who knows? As all of us know, the roads leading to the airport, Wyoming and Maple or Miles, excuse me, aren't up for that kind of traffic. We've got, we've got pedestrians, we've got bikers, we've got horses even. The city of Hayden came into play just last week because the airport director was asked what, how's this going to affect the roads? And here's what he said. "In regards to the roadways, this opportunity could actually benefit the city of Hayden and the roads greatly, as having a facility with commercial service can draw a great deal of federal and state funding into an area." So that means it gets federal grants for our local roads, I guess. Status, the initial lease was submitted to the commissioners in December. We opposed it and asked them if they would look at it a little bit more detail, and fortunately, and Commissioner Brooks was ready to sign, but Commissioner Philios asked to hold off, so fortunately, yeah, it's been, we've been given more time to review it, the Airport Association and the advisory board. The alternative, and this is why I'm here, one minute, the alternative is on the north ramp, lots of space on the north ramp, it's safe, it doesn't pollute, lots of just vacant land around it. So we're trying to push for the north ramp, and I would suggest the council possibly write a letter to the commissioners at Abports asking for that. Talking to this airport executive tonight, they are open to that, we just need to put some pressure on to go to the north ramp and be against the east ramp lease, in my opinion. That's it, thank you.
Clarification, north ramp is on Lancaster.
Lancaster, we have a big highway, 45 mile an hour, yep.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. And just as a point of clarification, our city administrator Brett Boyer is on the airport board.
Yes, I know.
Thank you very much. Thank you, sir. Mr. Rick Ettrion.
So I can ask everyone to take a little journey with me right now. We're going to jump into an imagination.
Mr. Ettrion, please address the council.
Rick Ettrion, 1268 Maroon Creek Drive.
Thank you, sir. And please address the council.
So imagine for a moment that you're out in space, and you see this beautiful view planet floating in space, and you move closer and you see the hemisphere, North America, USA, until you get to Idaho, the Panhandle, and closer still, and you get to Coot D County and finally Hayden. A community of outdoor-loving people, hikers, hunters, bird lovers, good people that in their heart, they feel that they should be feeding wildlife in the wintertime, even though they shouldn't, when it feels so cold and snowy. So it's really regular family folk that love where they live. Now look at two visions. Our city faces significant pressure to grow in population, and perhaps more importantly to some people, enormous opportunity to make a lot of money from their land. One of the most important aspects of our land is the water. Hayden sits on top of the Rathdrum Spokane Valley Aquifer Recharge Area, and what we do right here on top of that ground will trickle down into our drinking water for half a million people. For our neighbors to the north, and all of us in Hayden, Coeur d'Alene, all the way to Spokane, that aquifer is the sole source of drinking water for all of us. Keep that in mind. So sitting on the control panel for all of this growth, well, that would be you folks, the city council, the mayor and city council, five people in control. You sit here with your own beliefs, visions, preferences, biases, and each of you live in a sphere of influence, as do we all. We're influenced by the people with whom we associate, with we love and live. In your case, since you sit in a position of relative power in a community, you also have outside interests poking at your little balloons because they have their own interests, and they want to influence you in your decisions for their own ends. That could be money, could be greed, or even like me, an attempt to get you thinking for a little higher purpose than me. My intent is for you to see a vision of managed growth. I'm not here saying no growth, I'm saying managed growth. For example, let's take any section of land controlled by the city. Some properties are perfect for home, and we're imagining here. Some are not as perfect, but they may be perfect for another reason. You can pick any parcel open for development. Why might a property not be perfect? Because we live in North Idaho, we're blessed with all these wonderful water filters called wetlands. They protect our water by filtering surface water, so our drinking water always stays pure and clean. Since we're imagining this property, let's say that about a third of that is designated US Vision Wildlife Wetland. We want to protect that area, we want to build a buffer zone to protect the wetland area, and maybe create a hiking trail for residents to enjoy. Around that wetland, you could set up informational science so kids learn about the importance of the wetland, and what it contributes to our very survival. What a beautiful development that would be to have nice homes nearby, a walking trail for the ducks, geese, and all numerous other animals that live there because of this wetland. It's a beautiful vision. Now let's imagine for a moment, we don't use that vision, let's take another one. Let's take that, and for the same property, let's blast up a bunch of basalt rock, grind up the rocks, and fill in the wetland, build a bunch of houses directly on top of that wetland. Now what do you have? You have a, perhaps you have a future lawsuit from the connected wetlands that are filling that? You're not going to stop the water. All you're going to do is have perhaps lawsuits from families that find their investment has been flooded, and the wildlife all goes away because you destroyed their habitat. Any or all of this could happen. So the question for you is which vision do you support? Do you go down in history as a city council with a vision for protecting our clean water supply and managing growth, or are you here as just another pro-growth, developer-friendly bunch of councilmen? Your choice. Just keep in mind that we are watching. You were elected to safeguard our community and make informed decisions for the good of the community and residents. You were not hired to pave the land and provide a conduit for developers to make a lot of money on the back of our water supply. You were hired to manage properly how our city grows and to protect and love our land and ensure our drinking water stays clean. Please do that.
Thank you for your comment. Next commenter is Mr. Thomas Schaefer.
Hello again, Mr. Mayor, councilman. Tonight I want to talk about Hura for just a few minutes. First of all, I live on Rocking Our Road here in Hayden. Two weeks ago, I attended the Hura meeting, and as comes up occasionally during these meetings, they talk about how they're going to expand the boundaries of the Hayden Urban Renewal Agency. And I heard one discussion led by the executive director to extend the boundaries down Miles all the way to Maple Avenue. Last week, Mr. Paul Mallow asked rhetorically, what exactly is blight? Because that's the whole idea of what the Urban Renewal Agency is supposed to do, is combat blight. I walked down Miles, all the way from Maple to Government Way, I didn't see any blight. I don't know if there's anybody in this audience that lives in that area, and if they think that there's blight there, but when I was listening on this meeting, I heard somebody almost say under their breath that they were eyeing a nice piece of, of real estate there, which is an open field in the northwest corner of Maple and Miles as development, capable of being developed into a commercial property. I find this line of thought to be offensive, as if the Hura somehow has predominance over the private landowners who live in this area, who have homes there. I, I bring this up because I want to bring it to your attention as something I heard. Miss, Councilman Roder, you were there, if I misheard, you can feel free to correct me, but what I heard smacks of what I have an opinion of being, the wrong mentality that goes behind what Hura exists to do. So I'm, I'm done speaking, all I wanted to do was to bring this to your attention. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Next, Congress, Mr. Paul Arkiyama.
Mr. Mayor, council members, good evening. I live in the city of Hayden. I, I'm going to, I'd like to tag, tag on to Mr. Mike Kincaid's comment about the airport, just a couple of quick ones. If the, should the airport increase its services, as Mike mentioned, first question would be, what would happen to the existing navigation agreements that several of the subdivisions are under, and of which a proposed subdivision that is on our agenda tonight, therefore I won't mention which one, also has an navigation agreement that must be signed. So that's number one question. Number two question, the same topic that, that we have been, that we have been discussing throughout the months is, of course, the increased traffic that this increased service at our airport would bring. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Next commenter is Ms. Amy McCalmy. And Ms. McCalmy, as we mentioned at the start of this meeting, that comments on, on agenda items are, are not allowed tonight.
Okay. So hopefully this is not an agenda item. So I'm Amy McCalmy, I live in Hayden, and I'm just urging the city council to start doing what we have wanted to do, to do, with, with everything. It seems like week after week, you have a room full of people, which is ridiculous. Half of us are having to stand, because obviously this room isn't big enough. So it's my first concern is figuring out how to get more chairs in here, because obviously there's a community who wants to be very involved. The second thing is, even though we have standing room only in this room, there are way more people than this that are concerned about everything that's going on with you. And why aren't they here tonight? Well, what time are the meetings at? They're at 5 o'clock. So right now, I'm here because I have a 19-year-old and a 16-year-old who can kind of be on their own. My husband would be here joining me, but he's being a great dad and taking our daughter to soccer practice. So what are most people doing at 5 o'clock tonight? They're trying to get off work, they've got little ones at home, they're trying to do homework and bathing with. My point that I'm making is, we are not the minority, we are the majority. The majority cannot be here to speak because of the fact of scheduling, of trying to raise families. And we should be able to raise families, we should be able to be at our businesses, be at our jobs, and not have to come here week after week and basically babysit. Yes, we need to be involved, but we've made it very clear what we're wanting to be done with all of this growth stuff and everything else going on. I don't hear anybody ever coming in here saying like, we want, you know, this growing thing to happen, we want to add more traffic to our community, nobody has said that. So please listen to us.
Thank you for your comment, ma'am. I believe that takes care of our public comment section tonight. Anyone else care to? Okay, moving along then. First item, under unfinished business, we have item 3A is the Hayden Avenue and Atlas Road intersection improvements.
Right here, Alan?
Down in the corner. There you go.
All right. My name is Melissa Cleveland, and I'm with Welch Comer Engineers, and I'm the project manager, as the city's consultant, for the Hayden and Atlas Roundabout project. So Alan asked me if I could give just a really brief update to council. Let's see, so the overview is, this is the, the location, Hayden Road, Hayden Avenue and Atlas Road. Why do we need the improvement? I know you've seen this before, oh, it kind of got squished on there. Anyway, I added this table from when you guys saw this before, because I know that there was some wondering what the different categories for level of service was. So why, why do we need this improvement? It's one of the highest crash locations in the city, four injury crashes from 2017 to 2021, and 14 crashes overall. Also, today, the level of service is C, which is about 24 seconds per vehicle of delay, and that's an average in the peak hour. Now, if, if nothing's done, the projections of traffic show, it would have to be a four-way stop, you couldn't continue with it being a two-way stop. So once, if you converted it to a four-way stop, in 20 years, it would have very, very terrible level of service, F, I put F minus. It would be over two minutes of, of delay per vehicle to make it through that intersection. And the longest queue would be about a quarter mile long. So a roundabout in 20 years has level of service B, it's almost an A in 20 years. If you look down here, the, that range for level of service A is 0 to 10 seconds per vehicle, so it's just over, it's just barely into the B category. And short queues, I know that this seems long, because today, your longest queue is 150, but at a roundabout, it's like a rolling queue, so it doesn't really like stop, you know what I mean? It's kind of, so, a little bit different way of calculating the queue. So anyway, that's why, just as a reminder. Then, the reason we're updating you is we had the open house, and so I wanted to explain what we did. So we had display ads two times in the Coeur d'Alene Press, there was a post on the city's Facebook page, the Coeur d'Alene Press also wrote an article about it in the paper and had a post, a Facebook post as well. We sent packets to the impacted property owners, just kind of right there at the intersection, and then we held that open house on January 12th. So the summary is that we had that meeting from 4:30 to 6:30, 19 people came, we received eight comments, or, or seven forms and one email, so in the memo I sent you, that might have been out of date, because I think we got this email after. And all the people that, that commented were in support of the roundabout, and there were a couple other general comments about access and maintenance of the, of the swales. So these are the boards that were presented to the public, so this was just trying to explain what the roundabout would look like. It'll be similar in look to the fourth and Honeysuckle Roundabout, except it will have four roads coming into it instead of three, but really similar. In this rendering, just to orient people... In this rendering, just to orient people, this is south. This is looking south on Atlas Road. It was just the best photo we had. This was another board that we had. We had noticed that there were some comments on Facebook. We looked at what was going on out there on the Coeur d'Alene Press's Facebook page about roundabouts being unsafe for pedestrians. So we threw this board together. Hopefully you can see this up here. This shows the like number of conflict points for both vehicles and pedestrians at a roundabout. There's eight conflict points for vehicles and eight conflict points for pedestrians. And at an intersection that's either a four-way stop or a signalized intersection, it shows just that there's a lot more conflict points. So for that reason, I mean, roundabouts are safer for pedestrians. I know that there was some discussion about blind pedestrians having a hard time navigating a roundabout, and that could be. But today, they're navigating a very difficult intersection as well. So that was one of the boards. And then just the general concept, which you've seen before, was also there for people to see. So next steps, I'm not even really sure this is an action item. I know it says that on your agenda, but just to kind of tell you what's going on. So we need to finish the design probably between now and summer-ish. Then if the city desires, start acquiring right-ofway, probably towards the end of our design, so that if things come out of the right-ofway negotiations, we can change and adjust some things with the design. And then if you have construction funding, you could advertise for bids next winter, maybe about this time next year, if you had the money. So that is the quick summary.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Yeah. Any questions?
Alan, our Public Works Director, what information would you like from the council?
We just want to make sure that you still want us to continue forward with the design and complete that. Then we would put it on, probably basically have it on a shelf while we pursued funding for these options.
Okay.
So it's not really an action item so much as, this is still the direction that the council wants to proceed in this.
Council members, have any questions regarding the presentation? Yes, or Mr. De Priest?
Take a shot. Isn't this on the CIP for a couple of years out?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So...
And ladies and gentlemen, the CIP is our Construction Improvement Program.
Capital Improvement.
Thank you very much. Capital Improvement Program, which is contained almost entirely of road improvements.
Then is there funding slated for this from somewhere as of yet on that?
We have money, some money in our...
Impact fees?
Impact fees, thank you. But I'm not sure that we have everything we need today, but I think we're anticipating we'll have...
So you have a head start on it, shall we say?
So with the monies we have, we have the one-time money, we have some ARPA money, and we have the impact fee money. After we looked at the Hayden and Ramsey intersection, that one is going to be higher than we expected. I think it has a higher priority, but again, that comes from the council. So we have three intersections that we're looking at that are going to be multimillion dollars. The other one is the Ramsey and Honeysuckle. So those are the three that we're looking at now. And it's going to depend a little bit on the cost, a little bit more on Hayden and Ramsey, but we do have some funds. I think we have enough to do at least two of the intersections.
Well, let's see, that's kind of where I'm going because I've had some feedback about priorities here. Hayden and Ramsey. Ramsey and Honeysuckle. And now this. Where are we as far as either our funding or in the progression of it here? Where are we beginning Hayden, Ramsey? Where does this fit in that plan? Third, after the other two?
That is how it is currently programmed. Of course, as I've shared with council in the past, sometimes priorities change because of opportunities, right? And that's one of the reasons for getting these programs, these projects completed. So if funding from state or federal agencies become available, having a project basically designed and...
Ready to go.
Ready to go, provides you higher points and better opportunities.
Don't they often say completion data, you have to use the money by a certain time?
If you get selected on a program, they will have a program schedule, and it will have money scheduled for design, you'll have money that's scheduled for right-ofway, you'll have money that's scheduled for construction. They will have a preliminary schedule on that. Those things can change.
So you better be ready to go.
You want to be, you want to have a pretty good idea.
And you're asking us if we basically want to tell you, yeah, let's move forward so we can be ready to go. Thank you.
Any other questions from council?
Just a comment.
Certainly. Mr. Satterfield.
I was fortunate enough to spend about a month in Australia. Australia's been using roundabouts for many, many, many years. They have very few stoplights. And I ask a lot of questions. Everything that Melissa put up here is accurate. Pedestrian crossing, it can be a problem. In Australia, the problem was, I always looked to the left when the traffic was coming from the right. So I had to learn that. But it works very good, and it moves traffic along. And, you know, I'll use the example over here of Fourth Street and Honeysuckle. That's really improved the flow. So I'm in favor of moving on with it.
If there's no further discussion, would a council member care to make a motion regarding the continuing design on this potential turnabout?
I'd make the motion that we continue our design of the Hayden Avenue Atlas Road Roundabout project.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please. Abby?
Councilmember Satterfield?
Yes.
Councilmember De Priest?
Yes.
And Council President Roder?
Yes. Thank you. Item 3B, an action item, is our citizen engagement survey. Mr. Boyer, are you prepared to discuss that with us?
Yeah, we've had a workshop on this. It was on the agenda last time when we moved it to this meeting. And so there's not a whole lot to do. You have a memo that the council had requested that we look into doing a citizen survey to ask about growth, their thoughts and concerns. And so we looked at a couple firms, and then we did an online workshop with this individual, looked at it. And so I think you saw what they can do. The timing is in the memo as well. It would probably take a couple of months, got to design the survey, get the questions put together, get it out there, get the information back. And then there would be a report that would be given to the public on the information that we garner from there. So the cost for the survey is $15,900 and something, and that's an annual amount if we decided to go with this company. If we did one every year, the amount per survey goes down, according to the table, down to $12,000 if we did a couple, and then down to $9,000 per if we did more. So anyways, the council tonight needs to decide, do they want us to proceed with getting a contract with On Point to do a survey? Or do you not want to proceed with doing a survey?
If I might clarify a point that you made there, Brett. When you said it's $15,000 annually, if we did it for one year only...
Correct.
The cost is $15,000.
Correct.
If we sign up for two years, the cost goes down. If you want to do it, repeat it for three years, it goes down more.
Correct. It goes down if we did it for three years, did one per year, $9,000 something.
15, 12, and 9.
Yeah. Thank you very much. Council questions, discussion?
Brett, are we going to be allowed to, council, to give you staff questions of our own that we may have? For instance, in our facilities meeting, which Matt is part of as well, the question of, does the public want a community center? And if so, what in their mind is a community center? So are we going to be able to, you know, move some stuff in there? Or...
So, you know, from the discussion with him, the council would have the ability to give questions to him. Obviously, he wants to put them together so that they're clearly understood by the public. When you look at questions and how you ask them, they can be confusing, et cetera. The topics, when we look in there, he tries to keep the survey to about 10 minutes so that people will take it. And so depending on what questions you have, whether or not we can get to the community survey, that maybe would have to be a separate survey, or maybe there could be a couple of questions related to that that he can put in there. Until you sit down and actually get the questions, we won't know how much we can put in there. But the limit, he said, is the questions need to take about 10 minutes so that you don't... And he expects or hopes with the city our size that we could get a response rate of about 1,000 citizens at least back on the information. And then the idea would be, you can utilize that with some of the questions and concerns that have come from some people with public comment, you can utilize that to make some decisions.
Question, Mr. De Priest.
Thank you. My understanding was that for the most part, and he showed us examples, specifically a couple of things related to growth interests and things like that, he has a bank of them. But that we would be able to provide him questions that he would structure, and then they would come back to us for final approval.
Yes.
Yeah.
Before it goes out, it would come back to you for approval.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Roder?
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of comments. First, I'm okay with doing one year. I'd like to see what the response is, how we, as council, utilize it, seeing how effective it is. In other words, I don't want to commit to three years. I think a one year, let's see how it goes. And then if it's really good, maybe we can go three years or whatever. But for now, I'm only thinking one year. That's my thought. The other thing is, I think it's really important that people have to say. My goal in this survey would be, what do you folks want? What are the citizens of Hayden? It's we, the people, that I'm looking for that because we need that input in making decisions. It's one thing to say there's a group of people here that think one way, but does that really represent the whole city as a whole? So having as broad of a survey of folks as possible is really critical in doing this. So I support this wholeheartedly because we have to be in touch. We're hearing voices, and they're loud. That's good. But I'd like to get the bigger picture. And hopefully through this survey, we get a bigger picture. And the last thing I want to comment is, one thing I'm really concerned about is that this survey will be done digitally. It'll be done on the internet or through Facebook or through email. We have a lot of folks, and they tend to be in my age category, I'm there, that are not computer savvy. They don't have cell phones. They don't have computers. They may have a computer, but they have to ask their grandkid how to run it, you know, how many times is that? So I'm concerned that this survey, I don't want to miss out on their voice, the older folks that do not have the knowledge or, and/or the capability to respond to this. And we talked a little bit about that with a consultant, and kind of a little bit of pushback. So I would like to see mailing incorporated so that those folks that are not computer savvy will be able to get the response. I think that's critical.
Mr. De Priest?
Yeah, I'll agree with that. I'll agree with Council President Roder about the one-year thing. I think, see how it comes out, see the response and everything else. But also, with regards to senior citizens and the like, I've had input that it would be a good idea to have them at senior centers, places where they could, you know, seniors who come could take them there, have them here at, you know, City Hall, but to have a number of instruments to provide them. But what I found interesting, and I've checked it out, and it's been verified, mailers and things like that have minimal response. Most people get them and, you know, you get, that was the lowest response of all of the various instruments of delivery. So we would really have to find, I don't think if we, the cost of mailing, because that would be our cost on top of this, to 10,000 registered voters would be, I swear I'm not efficient, but we do need to find a way to provide multiple outlets to people. I think the senior center is a great one, but for people who did want to have paper access to it. So that would be something we should consider.
Other comments or questions from staff? Mr. Satterfield?
One thing that wasn't mentioned was, and I'm not trying to speak for council, but I'm pretty sure they'd agree, we had pretty much insisted that when we come up with the list of who to send this survey to, would be property owners, but also voters. Not every voter has property. And if they take the time to vote or come to these meetings like you folks do, they deserve the opportunity to get this survey and response. So I just wanted to point that out as it being part of what we're trying to do here.
Additional comments or questions from council? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion for the disposition of our direction on this public involvement survey.
Might I also ask?
Yes, sir.
I mentioned in here as far as the cost, where it would come out of, and I mentioned we could use ARPA dollars for this, which then would not be taken out of the general fund, or we can take out of the general fund. It would basically be some of our one-time or rainy day money because we had not budgeted for this this year. So if you'd like to mention the use of the ARPA money, we could do that. Some amount. We have $3.2 million. I just mentioned it. You'd like to include that.
May I hear a motion regarding the public involvement survey?
Sure. I would motion that we move forward with the city engagement survey.
Have a second?
I'll suck it.
Any further comment or discussion?
Just to clarify, that was for one year.
One year.
Hearing none?
Sorry.
I'm sorry?
But if there's an additional cost to the $15,000 that we print up surveys and we distribute those, do we not need some kind of dollar amount or something to our motion to make sure that gets done also? Because we're now just talking about approving, tarring the...
I believe the company we're considering hiring has given us a flat figure that it will not exceed, which is the $15,900 and some odd dollars.
But I don't know that that included any additional printing and distribution of a survey paper. Because what I heard was it was only digital. So maybe we could take that up as another action item later and just approve this.
If you approve it tonight, what will happen is, I'll have to go back and we'll put together a contract with that company, and it'll come back to you.
Okay.
Maybe at the time the contract comes back, then there can be some indication of what the extra expense in addition to that would be for an additional action item.
Comments or questions? Hearing none, roll call vote, please. Abby?
Council President Roder?
Yes.
Councilmember Satterfield?
Yes.
And Councilmember De Priest?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item 3C, reschedule or cancel future regular city council meeting. Mr. Boyer, have you got some information for that?
We discussed this last time. This is an opportunity, you know, look at your schedules. So the March 14th meeting is an election day, and this room is used as a polling place. And so we need to either cancel or move that meeting. So whatever the pleasure is by the council.
Council members, given the backlog of information that we have agreed... Councilmembers, given the backlog of information that we have agreed to discuss, I might suggest to you that, that we not just cancel the meeting, but that we reschedule Perhaps the Thursday following the regularly scheduled meeting, or perhaps the following Tuesday of the regularly scheduled meeting? Does anyone have any preferences or other thoughts?
So February, we're going 14/28 and then, March is 14/28, so either way, we're going to have back-to-backs, which, so 21 and 28, or, or 7 and...
In talking with our city attorney here, she is requesting or suggesting March 22nd, which is Wednesday, the 22nd, so it's...
And then we would leave our regularly scheduled meeting on the 28th.
So we'd go 7/22/28.
Correct.
No, we wouldn't go 7, we'd just go 22/28.
22 and 28.
Right.
22 and 28. Councilmembers, any comments or questions on that? Does that, does that work for folks?
True.
Mr. Roder, apparently your...
Yeah.
Mr. Satterfield?
Works for me.
Okay.
At 5:00 PM?
5:00 PM.
Yeah, they need a motion to amend the schedule.
Is that a Park and Rec Commission meeting that day?
Susie, is a Park and Rec...
Third day.
Yes, it is, the third day.
Are you done by 5?
No, we, yeah, we started at 4.
Okay.
They can wait.
Would it be possible to schedule a Park and Recreation Commission meeting upstairs?
No.
3 o'clock?
3 o'clock?
We did 5:30.
Council meeting at 5:30? About a council meeting at 5:30?
Works for me.
Mr. Satterfield?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and then if you could by motion, cancel that meeting on the 14th and then schedule the 22nd.
I would entertain a motion from, from council to cancel our meeting on the 14th and reschedule it for March 22nd at 5:30.
So...
Second? Have a motion and a second? Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call though, please. Abby?
Councilmember Satterfield.
Yes.
Council President Roder.
Yes.
And Councilmember De Priest.
Yes.
Motion passes. Moving on to new business. Item A, PZE 22-0075, the Hayden Canyon Plan Unit Development Plat. Boyer, are you a...
That's going to be Donna.
Donna, do you fill us in on that information, please?
Yeah, I have, I can put up the plat if you'd like me to talk to the plat itself or I can just talk to the memo. So what would you prefer?
Talk to the memo.
I'll put the plat.
Will it be up? Okay.
All right, so this is a PUD plat, which is an odd term, and we'll get there, hold that thought. And we lovingly staff have been calling it plat zero because Hayden Canyon had preliminary planned unit development and Hayden Canyon had a final planned unit development that identified the phases in which it would develop, identified about 10 phases, plus or minus. And it started off with several individual parcels as part of the overall project. And when the Hayden Canyon project came forward and amended their master development agreement through a public hearing process, it allowed them to do two things. The first thing is that it allowed them to do boundary line adjustments within those lots and to effectively move lot lines through a process. And we've been working with Rod Jones, who is the Cootney County Surveyor, because these are large lots that you're moving lot lines around. And the concern with boundary line adjustments and doing that kind of movement is that you can end up with slivers and overlaps and it makes a pretty good sized mess of the legal boundaries. And so in conversations back and forth with the county and in conversation with the developers that are a part of the Hayden Canyon planned unit development land today, they could have recorded all of these boundary line adjustments as various records of survey through the process, but it makes it really ugly for a lot of reasons as far as trying to figure out who's on first. And it doesn't recognize part of the requirements of the planned unit development. So the county surveyor said, why don't we just plat those lines as the record of surveys would have moved them? Okay, that sounds pretty good. Would totally make things easier for the county and easier for us and easier for the developers. Then you have the annexation requirements that are required at the time of the first plat, and you have the requirements in the master development agreement that occur at the time of the first plat. So although this came in in June, there were lots of, I mean, I want to say over a year worth of work trying to get to their application, and then there's been nearly seven months worth of work to get this in front of city council, because we needed to ensure that this plat met the intense, met all of the requirements of the first plat of the planned unit development, because that in essence is what it is. Additionally, as part of this first plat recording, they will deed to the city the property that was required to be deeded to the city for the park and the safety building as required in the annexation agreement and in their master development agreements. The Charter School actually have a lot in a block instead of a meets and bounds description for its property. The Institute for Community will also have a lot in a block that will denote its piece of property. And then this piece like right here, this is primarily the open space canyon area that will always be open space canyon area as required in their master open space agreement, annexation agreement and the master development agreement. So lots of layers of agreements that we're looking through. Additionally, when those two preliminary plats come forward for Phase 1A and Phase 1E, instead of being the whole, which is what, you know, they're both almost at the same process in their development, instead of them trying to figure out which one was going to do the whole and part of it and how those records are sort of all going to work, should this be approved by council tonight and recorded, then Phase 1E will come in and be looking at a plat, a final plat of the area that they received their preliminary plat on. And that that cleans it up for the county as well as for the city as far as our process forward. The other piece that comes forward with plat zero is that, and, and I, I remember this very clearly, Councilmember Satterfield, making proof positive during the amendment process of the master development agreement was that the master association was the point of contact for the city. We weren't going to go through 15 sub-associations to get to the question answered, it was going to go to the master association. So we've spent a great deal of time, Fonda and I have spent a great deal of time working through those association documents and their CCNRs and their bylaws to make sure that they're in conformance with the requirements of the, of the planned unit development and the stormwater management plan, stormwater agreements, the master open space agreements, the annexation agreement. I mean, literally lots of agreements to make sure that those all work. And then the CCNRs and then as the sub-associations occur, they will occur beneath the umbrella of the master association. So we're looking for approval of the plat as it's shown memorializing these lots in place and recognizing that we could have done this all with records of survey, but this affords us a, a better tool to make it happen for this project.
So then instead of having looks like, I don't know, seven, eight individual surveys on this, this has simply been combined to one survey?
Pretty much.
Yeah.
You, uh...
Go ahead, Councilmember De Priest.
Jumped again. Can you point out, you have, well, four points, but point number one, dedication of the required 19 acres, 18.5 parkland and .5 for safety building. Can you point those out there, what we're talking about?
That's this parcel right here in the small now tract.
And that's to the city?
That's to the city.
Okay. And the bulk of the open space to the homeowners association, is that that one down the middle there?
That's the one down the middle, yeah. And then they have a, a conservation easement that doesn't, it, it is here, it's, it's shown in one of the areas that's also identifying certain properties that will be part of the open space as well.
So what is that safety building that the city's going to have there?
There was a lot of discussion in the planned unit development as far as what that safety building would be, and it went kind of back and forth between a public safety for a sheriff's, like a sheriff's outreach, post, substation, or a fire station. The conversation went back and forth and ultimately it landed on the sheriff's use.
So they have like a little building for their use or whatever?
Or it could be in conjunction with what we have, how we develop the park, which is yet to be determined.
Thank you.
Hearing none, I'd be happy to entertain a, a motion on accepting this, this plat for, this combination plat for Hayden Canyon.
So...
You have a second?
A second.
Second. Motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call though, please. Abby?
Councilmember Satterfield.
Yes.
Council President Roder.
Yes.
And Councilmember De Priest.
Yes.
Motion passes. Ladies and gentlemen, there has been an awful lot of information and some misinformation generated about Stone Creek North. The city has a statement that I would like to read to you regarding Stone Creek North. And is it hard to hear me? I'm sorry, are you okay? I am going to include some dates in this because there has been some representation that the city has been operating behind closed doors or has not been open with, with the public regarding our process here. Stone Creek North applied for a preliminary plat in March of 2020. Their completed application was in April of 2020. In the narrative of their original request, the applicant identifies, and I quote, "The project consists of four phases to be completed over a seven-year build-out on the proposed lots." City sent out all of the notices that it was required to, and for Planning and Zoning Commission, which is the first meeting, Planning and Zoning Commission, received eight written responses as they identified in the meeting, and those present at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting had two, the people that spoke, there were two in favor, one neutral and four opposed. At the Planning Commission meeting, the chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission asked if the applicant demonstrated to our city engineer, Rob Wright, that the proposed infrastructure could meet all of the parameters if constructed within two years of the date of approval. Mr. Wright answered that the city had some things to work through that could be accomplished within that two-year timeframe. However, it is important to note, please, that the reference there was the ability to complete the infrastructure and not the requirement to complete the infrastructure. The applicant requested that the phased development, I'm sorry, the applicant requested a phased development and Hayden City Code 12341I clearly allows phased subdivisions to be completed within a five-year timeframe and then may ask city council for extensions. On a personal note, I would like to revisit this subject at the end of the statement. At the conclusion of Planning and Zoning Commission's deliberation, Commissioner Taylor moved to approve all of the staff recommendations with an additional condition, that the emergency access road to the north through Stone Creek North have a dedicated right-of-way to accommodate a city standard road. Planning and Zoning Commission approved that five to one. When planning and zoning included an additional condition, a second public hearing is required, this one before city council. Due to a change in the type of road from emergency access road to a public street, all of the agencies involved in subdivision review were re-noticed, public notices with legals in the paper, the city's website, news outlets, these types of things. The public comments received prior to Planning and Zoning public hearing, the minutes of the hearing and all the written recommendations of the Planning and Zoning Commission and the 17 public comments, all opposed, and nine agency comments received, were considered at the city council hearing. That night, the city council decided to continue deliberations until November 17th, 2020. At the public meeting, the city council completed their deliberations and determined that adequate evidence to support the granting of a preliminary subdivision could be met with the imposition of the conditions on the recommended approval. The written decision of this decision was approved by city council on November 24th, Hayden City Code allows for reconsideration of a council decision within 14 days of approval. No such request was received by the city. At the conclusion of the reconsideration period, since there were no requests for reconsideration, the city entered into a master development agreement with the applicant. This is a binding contract and includes the conditions required by city council at that Application was received for construction on June 29th, 2021, to include construction plans, landscape plans, stormwater calculations and a geotechnical report. The construction plans and storm, stormwater protection plans have had approximately nine iterations. In each of those iterations, it was returned by the city to the applicant saying, not good enough. Various outside agencies have also been reviewing these plans to include Avondale Irrigation District, Idaho DEQ, Northern Lakes Fire Protection District and the Panhandle Health District. The city now has substantially completed their review and are awaiting approval from these other eight entities prior to final approval and completing the construction improvement agreement. Our next step would be to hold a pre-construction conference with the developer. Ladies and gentlemen, Stone Creek North has completed the public hearing process, which has a complete record and all information provided, the, all information I've just provided is either from that record or from Hayden City Code. All elements of the public process were complete. The preliminary plat was approved with conditions of approval, the imperial, pardon me, the appeal period has long since expired, and the applicant has now met almost all of the conditions of approval. There is not a legal mechanism at this juncture that provides for further public hearing, comment or action on this project. There is obviously considerable interest in this project. I propose tonight to the city council that we hold a special council meeting to discuss this issue and to provide as many answers as possible to our citizens. I would appreciate a consensus from council members before I call such a meeting. If I might have a yes or a no from the council members, I would appreciate it. Mr. Satterfield?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Roder?
Yes.
Mr. De Priest?
Do we have any discussion on this?
Not at this point, no sir. Are you, are you in favor of a special council meeting?
When you're finished with the discussion? I'm for it because my comment will be, if you look at last week's meeting, I'm the one who brought it forward to have it.
Yes.
So obviously I'm for it.
Okay.
So whether I guess we want to have any discussion now or wait till we do have it is fine with me.
I think that having the special meeting is the appropriate place to have those comments.
Okay, fine.
Ladies and gentlemen, it gives me no joy to tell you this, but please, listen. The purpose of the special meeting is only to answer and clarify questions from the existing record. The existing record begins at the date of their application and ends with the written decision of approval from the previous council. It is not to take public comment on any new information and it is not to reconsider or reverse the decision of the previous council that was made in 2020. We would appreciate it for this public meeting if you would consider giving us comments in advance, your comments or questions in advance. Our reason for asking you to do that is that this is a very thick file and may require some research on the part of city staff. If you have legal questions of the city, that may also require some legal research by our city attorney. We would like to answer every question we can at that meeting. And if you can let us know in advance without having, if you can let us know in advance, we will at that point try to give you all of the answers that you're looking for.
Do you want to give them an email address to submit questions?
Could we post that on our web, could we post an email address on our website that they can submit questions to? That would be great. We will put that on our website. That concludes my statement. I would also like to add something personal here. Shortly after I was appointed as mayor, the residents of Stone Creek invited me to come to their HOA meeting, which I very much appreciated. During that HOA meeting, there were two questions I could not answer. There was one question about the two-year development window. And I answered at that meeting that I knew there was a development window that was going to end in two years. That would have been November 20 something, 2022. When I got back to the city hall here, I found out that this was a phased subdivision, which allows a five-year completion. I immediately contacted your HOA president at Stone Creek and also Jan Gira, the manager for the HOA. I sent them this email and said, "I made a mistake. Please let the folks know that this is a five-year window and not a two-year window." She said, "I wanted to confirm receipt of your email. I will immediately include this information to the owners." I suspect that that information, excuse me, did not go to everyone, but I accept responsibility for perpetuating the two-year timeframe. That concludes what the city can offer on this particular subject tonight. And I hope, we will schedule this, we're going to try to schedule this a couple of weeks out, ask for questions perhaps within a week and then give us a week to try to, to try to get those questions answered and do any research that we need to do. Would council like to come up with a special meeting at this point?
Date or what?
A date.
Our city attorney can, just looking at her availability, February 8th or 15th? February 8th or 15th? Both of those are Wednesday in the evening.
I would very much like to get this done as soon as possible. Does council have any problems with February 8th? No. Mr. Roder?
That's fine, yeah.
Then we would request comments, like questions being no later than the Friday before. Five o'clock.
Okay.
So by February 3rd.
So ladies and gentlemen, if you have questions that you would like to submit to us early, please let us have those questions by the end of day on Friday, February 3rd.
Did we set a time for the February 8th meeting? 5:00 P.M.?
5:00 P.M.? 5:00 P.M. Gentlemen, we're going to move on to item number 4C. The Hayden Area Regional Sewer Board Joint Powers Agreement Discussion. Do you want to take a break? Let's take a 10-minute break, take a stretch.
Wow. We're back on the air, ladies and gentlemen. We are continuing our meeting at 6:30 tonight. Our next item of business is the Hayden Area Regional Sewer Board Joint Powers Agreement Discussion. And Brett, are you the person trying to fill us in on that?
Hopefully, this will be a quick one. It's not meant to go too in-depth. We have two council members that are on the Harbs Board. That's the Hayden Area Regional Sewer Board. Harbs is comprised of three different entities. So we have the city of Hayden, we have the county, we have the Hayden Sewer District, all as, and I don't want to use the term owners, but signatories to this JPA.
JPA.
The JPA is a joint powers agreement.
Thank you.
And it outlines how the plant would work and how the organization will work, how we operate amongst ourselves. As we've continued to grow, the percentage that we own, so to speak, as a partner, has grown over the years. And we are now at about approximately seventy-five percent of the Harbs ERs users.
ERs.
Residential equivalent, I know that's backwards, but it's like.
wastewater units, WUs.
That's, yeah, there's.
Kins.
There's six, I won't confuse you, there's six WUs with every ER. But so the concept is that as we continue to go, the city's going to continue to be the main player in what's going on there over the years. And when we do projects, it's very cumbersome to have three entities deciding what we're going to do, how to finance it. And so for some years now, it's been talked about to have the city take over and disband the JPA. And so a concept would be that the city would take over the plant. It would be a division of the city under Public Works. And we would operate that and the other entities, those that are receiving those services would be customers of the city, similar to what currently Post Falls and Rathrum are doing. It would make a lot of the things that we do much easier. Because every time a decision is made, it may have to come here for a vote, and they all have to do a vote, then it has to go back to the Harbs Board and then have a vote. And so there's just multiple levels that could be avoided. And so there is interest in moving forward with discussions on how this would happen. The attorneys have had some initial discussion about how that could work and how it could look. And so there's, nothing's been decided. But before we go down this road, we wanted to bring this to the council and say, is it okay that we go down this road of discussion with the other entities to see if this will work? So that's really, in a nutshell, I don't know if there's anything that Alan or, Alan attends those, representing Public Works for us, and then Rogers and Matt are both on as our Harbs Board members.
Would you like a direction from council then to?
Yeah, I'd like a vote. Can we move forward and have discussions with the other entities to see if this is something that we can do?
Okay. Any discussion from council members? Mr. De Priest?
Go ahead. All right. Yeah, a couple of them, I guess. So what are we talking about, basically, absorbing the current facilities, staff, management, people, just into the city of Hayden as another department, or what?
That's, that's an initial concept, yeah, that they would be brought on as basically a division under Public Works as one of the, kind of the main concepts. And all of those folks would come across. Again, that's getting into the detail of this, and so.
What do you foresee is the, I hope you could, fiscal impact on the city? Would we profit from it, you know? Would it cost us? Would it wash?
Again, in the initial discussions, we're going to be talking about, you know, assets and liabilities. This is an enterprise fund. It's separate from our general fund. And so this isn't something to be looked at as this will be a moneymaker for the general fund. That's not what this is about.
Is break even just operate?
Yeah, this is about efficient operation of the sewer plant, and we all have our own collection systems. The city has its own collection system, the irrigation district has theirs, our sewer district does, and the county does, but it's maintained by, by the Harbs folks. So.
What areas encompass the, the district? Is that Hayden Lake? Who all is in the district?
You could say Hayden Lake area. There's, you take Hayden Lake and move towards Lancaster, maybe is the best way to describe, describe that. And then you've got the area around the airport for the county.
Okay. And I guess the last one is, does it increase liability to the city for any, in any way?
Well, if you think of it this, this way, right now, we're part of the entity, we're seventy-five percent. If there is liability at Harbs, there's liability to us already. So.
What types of things would be liability?
So, so first of all, you're kind of in the weeds. I want to, I would like to clarify why this decision point came here. So I was invited to attend a meeting with the other attorneys that are involved with the other agencies. And this concept was presented. And then the question was asked of me after, is the city inclined to move forward with these conversations? And I said, I don't have authority from city council to proceed in even having this conversation. So I'd like direction from the council on whether or not you're remotely interested in even looking at all of these detailed questions as well as the options available for this to happen. There's a lot, there's a lot of detail work and a lot of questions to be answered. I just didn't feel comfortable even having the conversations without permission from council.
All right, all right.
Yeah, we want, we want the council, mayor council on board this, let's begin discussions. Again, we didn't want to get in the weeds tonight. It's just.
Sorry.
Are you okay? No, that's all right. This is not something that's going to happen overnight. There is some complex, a lot of detail.
What would anticipate timeline? A year, two years?
Twenty, within twenty years, I think, definitely.
All right, I got you.
You know, I think if I, if I can add something, one of the reasons we're talking about now, about it now, is because we can talk about it now. For many, many years, the three entities were at each other's throats, and you couldn't get them to agree to anything. And so now it's been brought up, everybody's interested. So that's one of the reasons. And the other thing is, is part of the Hayden Lake Sewer District does go around the lake. Not very far, but it does go a little bit around the lake to help protect the lake. Okay, so.
Thank you. Mr. Roder, I thought that you were about to.
Yeah, I'd just like to throw in some of my thoughts. It's really, if you want to think government is the, it's cumbersome, the Harbs Joint Powers Act is about as cumbersome than I've ever seen, with a very complex entity to run based on EPA, DEQ, Idaho Department of Department of Quality, you know, affecting the county, and then affecting, affecting three entities. It is, and I, and I've sat on the board as a second to Roger. Roger's the voting one, but I'm, I'm learning. There's so much involvement there. And even at our last meeting, I thought, boy, if we could just eliminate the complexity of this, it would make it run so much smoother. I do know that the county's representative, Leslie Duncan, who's one of our commissioners, has made it clear she wants out. She said that their toilet paper budget is more for the county than what they put into Harbs, that they have an equal vote.
So the county is, just for the public, they're one percent or so, the district's about twenty-five percent, and we're about, I know the math isn't, about seventy-five percent. When you round it, it works. But that shows you, and when we got into it, it was with the district and the city, it was almost opposite. And so.
So, so again, I just want to emphasize, to make something so much more easy to operate and make decisions, the, we put it on an agenda item every month now at the Hayden Area Regional Sewer Board agenda to discuss this, to move forward. The only thing that we've talked about is having a workshop. And that workshop would encompass the three entities' decision makers, so we kind of understood what's going on. And I think that's really what we're, we're saying, let's move forward. We need to start talking about this and find out how complex it is to undo a joint powers agreement. And that's the big question for the attorneys, if we can.
And especially an entity that has public financing.
Yeah. So I support this a hundred percent. I think that it is so critical we have a sewer, because you think about, if you can't flush your toilet, we have, we're up the creek, you know? So having, having this thing simplified and running, and we have a great director out there, Ken Windrum is, he's incredible what he does out there. It's a great facility. So that's my two cents.
With, with that information, would a council member care to make a motion to have the city continue discussions towards combining entities within Harbs?
So moved, taken.
Hayden seconded. Do we have any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please, Abby.
Council President Roder.
Yes.
Councilmember De Priest.
Yes.
And councilmember Satterfield.
Yes.
Motion passes. For our reports, Brett, you have a city administrator report.
Real quick, I know we have some more things here. I was just going to mention our next meeting. I know we've talked about meetings. It is Valentine's night. We don't have any hearings scheduled. Should be a fairly light meeting, but I want to make sure we have a quorum. But again, that's up to, up to the council. We figured we'd leave it on there. But I don't, if, if the council wants to change otherwise, I don't think you have anything coming up, do you, Donna?
Definitely.
Content that needs to go.
That impacts projects.
So maybe what we could do is shoot for a very short agenda on Valentine's. But again, that's up to the council. Don't want any spouses. There's one spouse here.
They could reschedule it, but we do have stuff that should happen earlier.
Council members, how do, how do you feel about a February fourteenth meeting? Are you available, Mr. Satterfield?
Yes.
For a February fourteenth meeting? Do you need to check with the wife first?
No, a little, little advice for maybe some of the younger people. What I did was my wife's birthday, Valentine's Day, and our anniversary are all within the same week. So one deal gets the job done.
Schedule your wedding accordingly.
I'm available.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Roder, are you available?
Yeah, we've been married forty-four years, so I think it's Valentine's night.
I just got.
I mean, it's, 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 sometimes she doesn't even get me a Valentine, come on. I get her flowers, I don't get her. So no, it's not a big deal. That's okay. I mean, I love.
It'll be okay for my wife in the back of the room, so I guess we're, we're good to go.
She get a vote on this one?
She didn't do this, so I guess we're okay.
All right. We don't need a vote on it. I just wanted to make you aware. I didn't want to have any issues. We'll, we'll work to keep it fairly simple. Also, so it's the Association of Idaho City's Legislative Day on Thursday in Boise. And I am going down to represent the city there. I have an appointment with Doug O'Conowitz. We'll be meeting, and I may be able to meet with one of the others. And so if you, if you have any issue that you want to, you'd like me to discuss with our legislators, it's, we, it's a time we go down there and we get an update on all the legislation that affects cities that's happening, so that we're aware of what's going on, and then we can try to address some of that. We can meet with our legislators. It's time set, kind of set apart to do that. And so you can, you can email me or text me if you had any questions or topics you want me to bring up. But I just thought I'd mention that as, it's a good opportunity. And the last thing I just mentioned, the chamber will be having the state of the city. The mayor will be giving the state of the city on February twenty-third. And so we'll be asking if you'd like to attend that. They've moved from a breakfast meeting to a lunch meeting for the Hayden Chamber now, so.
Just for that, or?
No.
Everything's lunch.
Going forward. It's going to always be a lunch now. Well, change it again. So that is, that is all I have.
Thank you, Brett. Appreciate that. For roundtable discussion, I have one thing for council, and that is that, that Mr. Boyer and I today attended the governor's conference at the Corlaine Resort Golf Course. And I think both of us were quite impressed with the governor's commitment to education. That was primarily what it involved in three-hundred-and-fifty people there, but it was, it was an interesting meeting. Are there any other items for roundtable discussion? Yes, sir. Mr. Satterfield?
We've had a lot of comments in the last two meetings about urban renewal. And I'm not here to promote or, you know, urban renewal's its own discussion. But some of the folks said blight. Where Capone's is, that was an old gas station one time, blight. Where Northwest Corner, set the corner the car wash was on, that was blight. They participated in the redoing of Hayden Avenue between Government Way and US 95. And I believe now they're working on the old Spaniardos, which is down on, on Miles and Government Way. So, you know, I've heard some folks say there hasn't been, there isn't any blight. Well, there's a few areas left, but they've also already taken care of a lot of them. And the last thing I'd like to point out is the ten acres on the corner of Miles and Maple, I've been working on that for, what, two or three years now? And we've got first dibs, the city has first dibs on that property, and to make a park or something like that. So the rumor that it's gonna, that Tura's gonna incorporate it and make it commercial and stuff, we got first dibs. So, don't know if it'll work out, but we got first dibs.
Thank you.
And if you want to donate, feel free.
Any other roundtable?
Real quick.
Mr. De Priest.
You've read that for, right? I'm going to say it again. I brought it up, and I really think based on some of the things that have happened last couple of meetings, we need to have a workshop or something to look at the traffic impact study and the like, which was completed in 2018 before what happened in 2018, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two. And I'm not so sure they looked at the pass-through traffic coming from what's happened in Post Falls. But we need to address that. And I would hope the council would be interested in at least workshopping or doing something to see if my, my interpretation might have some reasonability to it.
Reasonability? Thank you. There is no further discussion? Yes, sir. I'm sorry, Mr. Roder. I apologize.
That's all right. Thank you, Mayor. First, I had a, a friend of mine who lives in Leisure Park. And he's in his eighties, and he describes himself as kind of grumpy. And he came into City Hall to complain. And he said, I came and complained, but you know what? You've got the nicest three ladies that work at the back office. He said, they're golden. He says, I can't believe what gems they are. So I don't know if that's in finance, or if that's in, with Abby and Sean and whoever those folks are, this guy doesn't just give out kudos like that. So I just want to say thank you for the three ladies in the back office, whoever they were, because he can be grumpy. So, so thank you. They did a great job. The other thing I want to bring up is that there's been discussion, and I like to bring it up possibly as a, an action item in the future, to look at having a public safety commission or a public safety commissioner. This would be somebody that, or a group that would integrate with the sheriff's department and maybe come in with a monthly report on how the number of hires are going, report on, we would like to get feedback when we're looking for a zone change from the sheriff on how that may affect public safety. That would be important for our decision making. Maybe bringing in the stats and so that we can talk about it. I don't know, that may be a commissioner that's on the city council or a person. I don't know, that may be a commissioner that's on the city council, or a person, there's a volunteer. I kind of like the idea of having one person and not a commission, so that comes kind of another layer of government. So I'd like to bring that up as a possible agenda item in the future, Mayor. And that's it. Thank you.
Good. I believe we can, we can accommodate that. That's a good idea. Councilmembers, your feelings on investigating the possibility of having a public safety commission liaison?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm, I'm in favor of it.
Good.
I'm not quite sure. I'd have to think about it, what duties we would expect of that person. Yeah, I think, I think it's important, especially with the, all the conversation that's gone on about Honeysuckle Beach, and as Ed brought up, our transportation plan, as well as law enforcement and things like that. I think there's a big scope there that I'm not sure we want a safety commissioner to cover all of it, but I'm just bringing that up, that there are a lot of items.
Worth a future discussion, though.
Mr. Mayor, I just remind you, the task force, one of the recommendations was to form a permanent public safety committee. And I know you've mentioned that. I'm just reminding you that that was one of the recommendations from that group, but we'll put it on for, for your discussion.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, I thank you very much for coming today. We're going to take a five-minute break, and then council has an executive session with our attorney that we'll be, we'll be moving with. May I have a motion for adjournment?
You got it.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's right. We're not adjourning. We're going to executive session. We're going to take a five minutes.
We need a motion for executive session.
Motion to executive session. I'll do it.
Motion and second. You need to say the section.
I motion that based on Idaho Code 74-2061F, to communicate with legal counsel of public agency to discuss legal ramifications of and legal options for pending litigation or controversies not yet litigated but imminently likely to be litigated, is my motion. Are we going to executive session?
Second.
May I have a second?
I didn't have to say all that.
You could have just said...
Roll call vote, huh?
Councilmember Satterfield?
Yes.
Councilmember De Priest?
Yes.
And council president?
Yes. Thank you very much for coming, ladies and gentlemen.